Slightly after 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 2nd of 2021. This is the City of Cortland Common Council. I'll officially call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. And give me a minute, I'm gonna hit mute on everybody. So that we can all say it individually together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There we go. Very good, we're gonna have the opportunity for public comments. I'll ask for people if you have something that you would like to address with the common council, please give me your name in the chat. You can raise your hand virtually. Or literally. And I will attempt to recognize in a timely manner. We ask that comments are directed to the council as a whole that they deal with city business that is relevant to city government. And we also work to keep them to three minutes or less in terms of time. So is anybody present that would like the opportunity for public comment? I had not heard that. I have a request for a moment of silence for somebody that I cannot confirm whether or not they've passed. If it's true, it will be relevant. And I do, I am going to request a moment of silence later for our former youth bureau director, but I have a comment. That we will wait and if it's appropriate, we will do it later or in the next meeting. Anybody would like to comment? Looking around, seeing none, hearing none, I'm gonna do some research while we move into the ward reports. And we're gonna go up the ladder, starting with the first ward.
Good evening. Um, well, the weather keeps shifting around out there. I just wanna remind folks that, you know, it's been pretty icy, so please be mindful with your sidewalks and also with the storm drains, especially since we've also been getting some rain out there. Always a good reminder to clean those out, to make sure things flow through properly. Also, got a few comments or concerns from folks over by Wheeler School. With the parents dropping off and picking up students, it causes quite a bit of congestion on the street. So I wanna thank DPW and the police department for looking into this. And just to remind everybody else out there that, you know, the, the street does get pretty tight and there are street signs that kind of direct where you can stop, where you can't stop. And just remind people to pay attention to those signs, they're, they're there for a reason for safety for everybody, so. And I think that's it for the first ward.
Very good, second ward is not present, so a third ward.
Well, you know, before I go on, Katie does have a little statement, a few things that she wanted to mention in her second in her ward report, are you okay if I just read that? It's just a couple, couple of things.
With the council's permission, we indulge.
She's, um, she said she was impressed with the recommendations for EO 203 for the police department and all the steps they've taken to get to this point. Love how Cortland's finest tackled this issue, thanks to Chief Catalino's leadership. And speaking of Cortland's finest, I wanted to say in my ward report how impressive it was that the fire department got the house fire in Maple Lab under control so quickly, despite the frigid temps and high winds. And an outstanding effort on the part of the Cortland Fire Department, which, that was her statement. And since I'm next, I would echo the comments on both of those issues. And the third ward specifically, we have an issue with some other, an outer creek property, but code and zoning have been very helpful with that, so we're keeping an eye on that. And other than that, things in the third ward have been pretty quiet.
Excellent, and then fourth ward.
I'll echo what Kat said and what Katie and Bruce said. And again, too, a few people have contacted me, concerned about the students and the partying. But then, as I discuss things with them, they do also acknowledge that every student that they see walking about is walking with a mask on and, and doing what they seem like they should do. But they assured their concerns. Other than that, it's been quiet in the fourth.
Very good, Jackie Chapman? Oh, Jackie, you're muted.
No, sorry. In the fifth ward, in that warm streak of weather that we had, a lot of people were out and walking and enjoying the slight warmer weather. And so I'm reiterating what Kat said. Now, it's very icy, so do be careful. And it comes up in the most surprising of places. Uh, had a concern in part of the neighborhood that there's resident trash all over and we're looking into that and, you know, how we can deal with that. But otherwise, everything else has been calm.
So the, the trash you're referring to, is that the stuff that we see from the snow melting?
A combination of all over the resident porch and in the snowbanks from the winter, now it's melting and coming up and out, but it's both. And the, actually, the code department has been active on that particular place with other issues, so.
Gotcha.
Resident concern that it just has been there a long time.
Understood. Yeah, I know that this time of, well, when you get the spring melts, a lot of recyclables that managed to escape their bins start to pop up.
Right.
Hidden by the snowfall, but.
Yeah, this definitely isn't recyclables, but somewhat looks like people were moving, but they haven't.
Got you. All right, thank you, Jackie.
Yes.
Moving on, Troy Beckwith?
Yes, sir, good evening, everyone. All quiet in this other ward, thank you.
Very good, Tom Michaels?
Just a couple of things, I just wanna thank our fire department for the, the task at hand last night's fire. I'm sure that that was certainly challenging with the, with the winds. And, uh, and certainly it's, it's not the time of night that people wanna be out fighting a fire, but you guys, you girls and guys did an excellent job by putting that out and saving the houses that door. The other related issue is the, I wanna thank our DPW for being proactive in knocking down our snowbanks along a couple of our side streets, Williamson Church and Randall and Church. This was certainly something that the residents really appreciated during that last snow that we received. It really helped out a lot. Thank you. That's all I.
Thank you, Tom. Yep, even after the roads are proud, there's still snow removal and moving of some of the banks to make sure that there's clear lines of visibility, so a lot goes into it. Great recognition. For mayor's report, there's a couple of things, like unfortunately Ken confirmed, said he recently lost a former employee, former department head in charge of the Department of Public Works, Bobby Spata, approximately 20 plus years in terms of his employment. So we can take a moment of silence? Thank you, everyone. And unfortunately, one more, it was a rough week in terms of former heads of departments. Fran Tokar was the youth bureau director, I believe he worked for the city for 35 years. Really set the tone and did a wonderful job as director for the youth bureau. So if we could have another moment of silence, this time for Fran Tokar, please. Thank you, everyone. And I could follow up, Kat, the discussion about Wheeler Ave, Smith with the school drop off pickup, we are having discussions. Been by there a number of mornings for the drop off time period, just to see firsthand what is going on. And we do have issues with cars stacking up as they're dropping children off. And in the afternoon, it seems to be the same thing, except picking up, in case that wasn't obvious. But we are working with the administration and wanna make sure first and foremost that the kids are going to be safe as they're getting to and coming from school. We wanna make sure they are safe. I would just implore everybody, if you do happen to go down Wheeler Avenue when school is starting or ending, take your time. Because an extra couple of minutes is well worth it, takes a little bit longer to get down Wheeler. Okay, we wanna make sure that we are keeping it safe for the kids. And we, we will have more information, but some of the issues referring to another comment that was made during the ward reports, in terms of people not complying with what is expected regarding gatherings. And the property that we experienced, the large gathering at, I think that was three weeks, three weekends ago now. There's further action being taken, there are strong sanctions coming not just from the college, but also from the city. And we'll be more clear to the public about that as we get farther along. But everybody can rest assured that we are taking COVID very seriously, and when there are violations, we are holding people accountable. So there'll be more information about that, that will be coming out. And the last item of business before we get into a proclamation, I would ask for an executive session at the end, two items. One would be contract negotiations, where we stand in terms of negotiations. And the second, a contractual negotiation, a contract to discuss. So with council's approval, we will have an executive session at the end. Informational, we do not anticipate action afterwards. Counsel, any objections?
Not at all.
Very good. And I have the pleasure of reading a proclamation regarding Red Cross Month. And full disclosure, I may be a little bit biased, I am a Red Cross instructor for a couple of different courses. And when there was a local board, I served on the board, was president of the board for a little bit. So this has a special place in my heart. So March, we declare March Red Cross Month, which is a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, donate blood, take life-saving courses, or provide financial donations to support the organization whose mission is to help those in need. And we wanna remember all of those who help all of us here in Cortland County by giving their time to help their neighbor and to thank our heroes, volunteers, blood donors, class takers, and financial supporters who are willing to go above and beyond. In Cortland County, the Red Cross works tirelessly, not just through employees, but mostly through volunteers. And when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood or the comfort of a helping hand, there's 24-hour support, members of the military, veterans, their families. Red Cross provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And across the state, we assist members in the military and their family members. This is an important task because we, the Red Cross keeps people in contact with their loved ones, even when they serve overseas. Despite these challenging economic times, the American Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort to those in need. Therefore, I, Brian Tobin, Mayor for the City of Cortland, hereby proclaim March of 2021 as American Red Cross Month. And I encourage everybody to recognize and support the organization and its noble humanitarian mission. So Red Cross, we think about the classes, we think about donating blood, the fire that was mentioned earlier. In addition to the paid staff from the city and the volunteers in the city firefighters who worked very diligently, there was representation from the Red Cross to make sure that the families that were displaced were not left with no place to go. So the Red Cross was very active even last evening. That's the proclamation for this evening, like to move on to the minutes, approve over a minutes from our last meeting, I believe it was February 16th. Motion to consider filing the minutes from John Bennett, is there a second? Troy Beckwith, any questions or concerns regarding the minutes from the last council meeting? All those in favor of filing the minutes as is, please say aye, give me a wave. Very good. Any opposed? Everybody voted aye, so we should be good. Agenda item number one, consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign and submit two community development block grant applications to New York State Office of Community Renewal, seeking funding for a micro enterprise assistance program and a housing rehabilitation program, and to authorize the mayor to execute grant agreements with the funding source for either or both grants upon award to the city, and to undertake any other actions necessary to implement the program or programs if we are awarded both. Motion to consider, Kat McCarthy. Second, Jack and Chapman, discussion. And Linda Armstrong, if there's questions, is here and can help answer. Micro enterprise assistance program would hook, excuse me, help local businesses and the housing rehabilitation fund could be a great opportunity to continue to support homeowners, property owners in terms of keeping properties up to code. No questions, everybody in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
For being here, Linda. Number two, resolution to accept, recognize, and appropriate the following donation to the youth bureau, this is from Todd and Michelle Funk, and this goes to Youth Center. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second, John Bennett, discussion.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, a big thank you to Todd and Michelle, they are regular donors, I see their, remember their name many times, so we're very appreciative. Allows the Youth Center to continue to do a wide range of activities. Agenda item number three, consideration of a resolution to allow the mayor to sign an MOU with the SUNY State University of New York at Cortland University Police Department. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Bruce Titler, discussion. So I've been told that this is going on 15 years, possibly longer, so this goes back before my time as mayor. But this allows university police to assist, consider it mutual aid when there are issues or concerns in the city, so that there is clear lines of communication and what's expected. Is there any questions about this MOU? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Agenda item number four, resolution to adopt an updated code feed schedule as attached. Motion to consider. So we can have discussion, we have a motion. Tom Michaels, second, John Bennett, discussion. Based upon a message that I received just before. Mr. Van Donzel, Rick, will you be addressing questions or?
Um, I can. Uh, the, uh, this, this, these are increased rates based upon the fact that there's been a number of years since they've been upgraded and is more consistent with what our neighboring cities and counties are charging for the various things. Mike Tenkate worked on this pretty hard and made sure it was fair and reasonable.
Any questions from council, I hope see one from Mr. Titler.
No, Troy, I think was ahead of me, go ahead, Troy.
Yeah, we did, I think we talked about this a year or two ago, I think the only thing we did raise back then was just the standard roofing permit to make it more feasible to, and affordable for people to get the roof done. I don't see any problem with it.
Yeah, I, I agree with Troy's timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, um, I had a phone call on this, and just to clarify, just as a clarification, most of these fees, as Rick said, had not been updated since 2012, so it's been quite a few years. The, the, the document says, you know, circles 2019, but I talked to Mike Tenkate, he said most of these are from 2012, so it's been quite a while. And the only thing I would ask council to think about is, when does this, when does this get implemented? Because I do know, I mean, this is, this is, you know, one heck of a year here, we're still, we're looking to get out from under this cloud, but we're not quite out from under it yet, and I know that some of the landlords haven't been collecting, haven't been able to collect rent for a while, so, you know, the whole system is not quite what it usually is. Should we maybe put off implementing this until June or July or something to give landlords a little bit more of a chance to, to plan for this? Since some of them are actually seeing decreased revenues, I'm just throwing it out there as something to consider. Normally, I would be all supportive of this to take effect immediately, but these are unique times.
Counsel, thoughts?
You wanted to take, you wanted to take effect immediately, Troy?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, you know, to be honest with you, not that, don't take this the wrong way, folks, but we had done quite a little bit already, you know? Doing something with the water, the taxes, so I mean, I think that's, you know, if we wanna do something, we can continue to do something, but I think these permit fees and everything else should just go forward tonight.
Counsel, any further discussion? Tom Michaels?
I am hearing some hardships from some of the landlords in the city. And it's hard for them to collect rent when their tenants aren't able to pay it. And I don't have a problem putting this off for a little bit, at least till after the spring. To be able to let some of these individuals get back on their feet.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with voting on it tonight, if we just have a stipulation and maybe they don't take effect until, like Tom said, after spring, you know, maybe June or July or something like that, I don't have a problem voting on them. My question was, when will they take effect? Because I do know, as Tom said, some folks are experiencing some, some difficulties right now, so.
Um, I see Kat's hand up, but if I can ask Rick for a legal opinion, I'm not sure if that was your question, Kat, but Rick?
Yeah, if, if you're going to set a date, you need to do it with this resolution and make an amendment, because otherwise, all of our resolutions and ordinance take effect upon your vote. So if you don't set a date, it'll, it, the charges go on tomorrow. So consider that, you know, if it's gonna be June 1st or July, whatever it is, just set it in this thing with an amendment.
Very good, Kat McCarthy?
I think that answered half my question, the other half of my question was that the department budget, did it assume the higher rates or the lower rates looking ahead at this year, will that impact anything financially?
I'm looking at Wayne Friedman.
Was in the budget as the higher rates, so it'll impact it, I guess positively with higher revenue.
So a delay would not have a negative budgetary impact on what was projected for this year?
Correct.
Okay.
So then, would folks be okay with, you know, setting June 1st as when they go into effect? Uh, Tom, did you wanna push it back a little further? I mean, and, you know, just.
Actually, Bruce, I think we're on the same page tonight.
Yeah. Let's go buy some lottery tickets.
So I believe that we would need a, oh wait, John Bennett?
I would, I would propose July 1st. That's just four months. That should, hopefully by July 1st, things might be a little bit more, more, a little bit more back to normal. So I would propose a resolution that, because I think we need to make a new resolution.
No, I think, I think Rick's saying we just have to add an amendment, I'm okay with July 1st, that works for me, but I don't think, I think we just add an amendment, we'll get, we'll let the council weigh in on that.
Yeah, just someone move to amend it so that it commences July 1st, 2021. And a second, vote on that amendment, and then a main vote on the whole new resolution.
Does July 1st work with you, Troy?
I agree with that.
Okay, then I'll make the motion, they take effect July 1st? We make that amendment?
So a motion on the floor is to amend the resolution to add effective July 1st of 2021. So now we need a second for the, and there I see hand up, Tom Michaels supports the motion. All those in favor, this is, we're gonna vote on the amendment, are we adding the amendment yes or no to the resolution? So that's what this first vote is, all those in favor of adding the amendment to the resolution, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, six oh. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, then the next vote is on the resolution with the amendment included. All those in favor of updating the code fees effective July 1st of this year, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, passes six oh. Uh, number five. Resolution authorizing the indefinite loan of a game well alerting mechanism that is located at the headquarters fire station to the Central New York Living History Museum's new historic fire station display. This mechanism has not been used by the fire department numerous years and will not be of use in the future. A motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second, Bruce Titler, discussion. And I believe Wayne Friedman, Chief Friedman is here if there are questions.
No, the chief, as usual, covered it pretty well in his letter to us, and I think it's a great idea, nice way to preserve some history.
Yes, absolutely.
Good. No further discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Number six, resolution to transfer $5,467 from the police revenue line, A3120-44389 to the police department clothing line. And this is for Department of Justice ballistic vest grant reimbursement for 2020, and that will be utilized to offset the cost of new vests in 2021. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Tom Michaels, discussion. All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. And agenda item number seven, resolution to recognize and appropriate $2,504.80 in proceeds from scrap sales to contentos in the form of abandoned vehicles from the impound lot and brass from firearms training to be placed in the firearms training budget to help defray the unanticipated cost of sending four new hires to the academy due to retirements and lateral transfers. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number eight, discussion on Anderson's Market hosting a benefit for the Cortland City Police K-9 unit in form of a barbecue on April 17 of 2021, from 11:00 AM until gone. Menu to be determined. I hope it's barbecue. Uh, discussion, Deputy Chief Sandy, would you like to add anything to the agenda item at this point's ward?
Um, thank you, this'll be for our K-9, which is supported solely through fundraising events and donations. Uh, the K-9 is not in the budget, so this money would come in handy. Um, for those that don't know, Matt Dehart, one of the owners of Anderson's, father used to be a Cortland County sheriff and a K-9 officer. So that brings a tie into us and, and we much appreciate their support.
Tom Michaels?
Actually, Anderson did an excellent job at the last police fundraiser they had here last summer. Uh, my wife and I drove out there and they were very well organized. Uh, my wife and I uh, drove out there and uh, they were very well organized. They do an excellent job.
The barbecue is unmatched.
And um, question coming in. Uh, location, choice of location because, and I think you kind of covered it with regards to the former employment of, is it the owner is a former county sheriff, former K-9, is that what you said?
Uh, the owner's father was a former police officer and a K-9. And uh, Anderson's Market is located out on 281 uh, near Little Rock.
Very good. Further questions? Just in the form of a discussion, it is not a resolution. Do we need a formal resolution and then to appropriate the proceeds? All right, resolution to consider collaboration with Anderson's Market hosting a benefit for the City of Cortland Police K-9 Unit form of barbecue on April 17th, uh, proceeds to go to. Do we have a K-9 line, Deputy Chief?
Yes, we do. It's in the T95 accounts upstairs. It is controlled uh, through the finance department.
So for the purposes of this meeting, we'll just, in the resolution, we'll designate it to the revenue line regarding the K-9 unit for the City Police Department. We have a motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Troy Beckwith, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Next up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution to lift the hiring freeze to hire an accountant. Make sure I didn't miss one. Accountant in the finance office to fulfill the pending retirement of the Assistant Deputy of Finance. Uh, motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. Uh, Matt Cook. Mac, are you here?
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Uh, timeline.
My best timeline right now is uh, a retirement on May 14th of this year. We are planning for some overlap. So I would like to have the accountant in place close to April 1st through April 15th, so I have at least four weeks of, of training possible.
Okay, and salary?
I haven't advertised for the position yet, obviously. I have an idea what the market is for this. It's less than what we're paying now. I believe I kind of put that out in a pro forma uh, on cost. Let me look here.
Looking on cost reduction is in the packet.
I'm looking at a base salary of around $55,000 for the accounting position. That's around 30, that's around $30,000 less than what this position is right now.
So the first one on the sheet under cost addition where it says comptroller?
Yeah, I'm just, use, use accountant. Uh, compt, comptroller is a confusing term, it's an old term. That's what we used to call them in, in, in city government, just, just using. Please, just use accountant.
Okay, well, we're talking about an accountant, but if you're looking at the sheet, it's the one that says comptroller for council's information. And base salary of $55,000. So we can say at a salary not to exceed $55,000 for starting tag. And I've already forgotten, have I asked for a motion to consider? I believe I did. That's right, it was Tom and then Jackie, correct? All right, counsel, discussion.
All right, I think if I'm not mistaken, this is part of a semi-reorganization of the finance department anyhow, isn't it, Mac? Aren't we looking at?
I would say all four, all, this resolution and the following three are all very connected to each other. If you want to discuss the, all of them together, that might be more comprehensive than uh, one resolution at a time.
So for the public's benefit, the next agenda item, resolution lift the hiring freeze uh, for an account clerk to fulfill the vacancy in the water department. Um, and then number 11, retain the services of Bonadillo and Company to review existing accounting systems and processes and render assistance in implementing necessary systems revisions. Uh, cost not to exceed 18,000, and then number 12, resolution to retain the services of Inserio and Company to facilitate the transfer of responsibilities from the deputy finance director to the comptroller position, which is not a comptroller, it's an accountant.
Just accountant.
Uh, ensuring a continuation of functions during the transition. Assistance with the 2020 audit and submission of the 21 annual update document at a cost not to exceed $25,000. So those are the four agenda items.
Yes, it is, uh, as Alderman Titler, Titler alluded to, yes, it's, we are trying to modernize the accounting functions now that we're having a transition in that department. And as I did, I've outlined why we have to do this in the goals in your council's packet. Uh, it's not the only retirement that is going to be upon us here in the next two years. Um, we need to find some, we, we need to become a little bit more efficient and, and reduce the cost in that department. At the same time, um, progressing a little bit further into integrating the accounting systems and eliminating what will be in the near future unsupported unsupported software platforms that we're using now and have been using now for over 40 years.
All right, so we do have a motion on the floor for the first of the four, which is agenda item number nine. Uh, lifting the hiring freeze to hire an accountant in the finance office. Counsel, further discussion?
I just got one more item to ask.
Tom?
Uh, Mac, will all these individuals be housed uh, at City Hall?
Uh, yes, that's currently where they are now. And that's what we'll. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0, in addition to lifting the hiring freeze, uh, resolution to allow the hiring of an accountant uh, effective April 1st at a salary not to exceed $55,000 per year. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Uh, number 10. Resolution to lift the hiring freeze to hire an account clerk to fulfill a vacancy in the water department due to past retirement. Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second. John Bennett, discussion. So the accountants uh, Mac, on the sheet, are we looking at June 1st? In terms of the hiring date?
Yes.
So potential hiring date of June 1st at a base salary of not to exceed $29,153, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the other question I had, in terms of funds, and I think we discussed this, but we want to make sure it's clear, is this going into or coming out of the general fund as opposed to the water fund?
Uh, because this person is going to become more of a general accountant, general accounting clerk and servicing several functions, just not unique to the water, it would be, I want to move it out of the general fund. I mean, excuse me, I want to move it out of the water fund and put it into the, into the general fund.
So point of information for counsel, this was in the water department, which is a separate budget line and would be in the general fund. Uh, Troy has his hand raised, and then corporation counsel. Rick, um, after Troy.
Um, Mac, are any of these, any of these falling into civil service?
Oh, they're all civil service, and I uh, included in the packet the civil service job descriptions.
So the, the $55,000 we just approved down the first one, that falls within uh, classification of pay, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then Rick?
A, as you may recall, probably a, a year or 18 months ago, we had an agreement with the CSEA and the SEIU Union. Uh, and this new hire on June 1st of the account clerk will transfer a union membership from the CSEA, which typically governs the DBW and the Water Department to the SEIU, which is uh, more aligned with the account clerk uh, position, so that, this will experience that change.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Um, and just point of information as it was stated, but I will reinforce, this is a replacement of a position that has been vacant since last summer. So this position uh, is another one that we left vacant for a period of time to make sure we were keeping the books balanced over the past eight or nine months. Um, so let me add another agenda item. Uh, consideration of resolution granting permission to hire an account clerk to be funded through the general fund. Um, position to be effective June 1st at a salary not to exceed $29,153. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Cat McCarthy, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Very good. Number 11, resolution retaining services of Bonadillo Group and Company to review existing accounting systems and processes and render assistance in implementing necessary systems revisions at a cost not to exceed $18,000. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Cat McCarthy, discussion.
Yeah, I have, I have Mac. Bruce? I, I discussed this with, I discussed this with Mac this afternoon, and he gave me his uh, thought process for why this didn't go out as a RFP. And uh, I think he makes some good points. I would have preferred to see it gone off an RFP, but I was, since this is a public meeting, I would like, Mac, maybe you could take a couple minutes and explain why you wanted to do it this way?
I'm willing to do it either way. The, what we have going here on this reorganization is two simultaneously moves. One move is I have to keep the books continues to go. Transactions will occur, the accounting function has to stay in place. While that's going on, we have two principal, two main systems, which we've been using now for 40 years, the water and sewer billing and the property tax collection. Those are on what we call legacy systems. They were written for the city. They are on an old DOS space, a DOS-based platform. My fear, and I think I'm, I'm justified in this, is that when my current IT person retires, is that those, both of those positions, which his father-in-law wrote, will no longer be supported. So I'm, as we, so one of the main thrusts is moving these two accounting systems or, or converting those systems into integrated systems that integrate with our current software platform. Okay. Um, the Bonadillo Group was going to use this. I have six reasons. I have um, spent early this morning, starting to write the RFP. Um, I will continue tonight to write the RFP. Uh, Sylvia is upstairs writing what I, typing what I wrote this morning. I have six solid reasons why I believe this is a better way to go, and I can enumerate that if you want. But if this is going to be an issue, I'm going to put out an RFP and that will back us up on the, on the transition for about probably close, close to 30 days to 60 days, which I can make work. But I do have six solid reasons, but if people want an RFP, I'm almost done with it.
John Bennett?
Uh, I'm very happy with the Bonadillo Group having it. Um, they know our, they've been with us uh, doing the city audit for numerous years. Um, I have no problem.
Uh, Rick, did you have a hand up?
Yeah, I ju, I just want to back up some of uh, Mac's point. Uh, you know, this is well within the exceptions to the RFP rule. It is under 30,000, they provide a specialized service, and they have a unique relationship with the City of Cortland, given their history, so that we don't lose time in the learning curve. Uh, and I think that's one of the most important parts. And the reasons why we can not use the RFP, so I, I'd hope that you keep that in consideration, you're being lawful in not using the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Once again, I'm, I can accommodate. I can accommodate the delay in the timing. And I have no problems with issuing out an RF, an, an RFP.
I can live with this.
I'm just looking.
I mean, Rick, Rick, Rick makes a good point too, and, and Mac did lay out. You know, I, I think it's worthwhile, Mac, to explain a couple of the reasons why you want to do it.
Be happy to. Uh, my first point is that we have a 10-year history with Bonadillo as our auditors. They're well aware of our staff, they're well aware of our capabilities, they're well aware of the weaknesses and the risks imposed by continuing to rely on, on these two, two systems that are antiquated and will become non-supported. The Bonadillo has a vested interest in maintaining the relationship beyond just this one engagement. Uh, there are outside auditors, they would like to remain our outside auditors. So they're vested in our success. Knowing the city, more of the work, more of the resources, more of their fee can be directed in going forward instead of teaching and learning how we're currently do, currently do business. They know that. So I'm trying to put as much resources into the future and minimize the amount of learning curve, I think that was mentioned. Uh, because they already know what we do and our systems are documented and part of their audit. City staff does not have to spend time teaching and explaining what we're doing now, so that, that minimizes the intrusion uh, on city staff. And I think it's one of the biggest reasons we'll come up with the next resolution.
Okay.
Bonadillo. Ann and Cyril. They, I have watched them now for nine years. Work together. Uh, uh, in, in the consortium. They represent, both of these firms are involved in our healthcare consortium, and I have watched them work together. Where I am not always sure among competing firms, that that's, that's a surety. So they have, what I need more than anything else. Is everybody working together on the same page and understanding what one party is doing and not. Not being afraid that somebody else is also involved.
Okay. Thank you, Mac. Thanks for walking. Every me through this anyhow, again, in a public meeting and, and so people understand. The rationale behind this. I'm, I could support this. Um, I, I like the idea of moving forward and being smarter, you know, and trying to, trying to do. More work. With, with fewer resources, because that's going to be the. Part of our issue going forward for sure. So, um, thanks for taking the time on that, Mac. I know that you understand all that. Um. Now I understand.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Becky, just to confirm, that was in favor, correct?
That was in favor, yes.
Very good.
Be late.
Mo- motion carries six zero. Uh, agenda item number 12, resolution retained the services to. Of Inserio and company. To facilitate the transfer of responsibilities from the deputy of finance and administration to the comptroller, accountant. And director of finance, ensuring a continuation of functions during the transition. Also to assist. With the twenty twenty annual audit. Last year is being done. And submission of the twenty-one annual update document at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Motion to consider, John Bennett. We have support, Jackie Chapman, discussion. Uh, Mr. Van Donzel.
Just so that the council knows and, uh, and putting you on notice, I have a professional relationship within Zero Company. Uh, relative to a former business of mine and my personal finances. I don't believe it proposes, supposes a conflict in this regard.
Uh, let me just say a couple of words on this one. I am not so much retaining a firm. As I am retaining two individuals in that firm. That have an over twenty-year relationship, professional relationship with the deputy. Um. They are of collaborating personalities. There is a comfort level there. That I'm trying to take advantage of. So that. This transition can be as. Least stressful. As I can possibly, possibly make it. Um. So that's what's driving me to. Uh. To this. This is why I'm, I'm splitting it between two firms. But it's really, I would just want to emphasize. I am more, I'm retaining a person. Much more than a firm. Uh. In this transaction.
Right, any questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Very good.
Thank you. I, I understand this is back office stuff that. It's, it's, it's riveting. But it needs to be done right. It needs to be done within a. Very narrow timeline. Uh. And I can't, you can't stop what goes on to improve what goes on. In accounting.
Mac, when, when you say it's riveting. Does that mean you get goosebumps during this?
After forty years, I got.
It's, it's riveting.
No, but. What I do get is white hair and ulcers, and I have both of them.
Oh.
I have. I have both of them.
We're going to move on to agenda item number thirteen. Before we have any further HIPAA violations. Uh, number thirteen, resolution to set a date, time and place for a public hearing to solicit input on the community impact of the two thousand and sixteen. CDBG infrastructure grant that provided funding for replacement. Regarding the Clinton Avenue Water Main Motion. Uh. Do we need to set the, we should probably set the date, time and place and then. Entertain a motion to consider. Um, so the. Next council meeting, Mac, is appropriate?
I, I would think so. This should not take very, very long.
So March sixteenth. Yes, via Zoom, seven PM. Okay, very good. So now we can entertain a motion to consider the resolution to set March sixteenth at seven PM as the opportunity for this public hearing. John Bennett, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries. Number fourteen, resolution to waive a re-levered payment penalty of twenty-six dollars and twenty cents on a property inspection charge. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. For somebody to thank you, Bruce Titler, discussion. Um. So the issue is that the. Property owner had a P O box. They eliminated their P O box, never got. The. Statement or the bill, and then it goes on to the taxes. Um, the late fee goes on taxes, and that's the concern. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, number fifteen. Discussion regarding the city's plan for executive order two oh three. What I'd like to do is to screen share. However, I have to find the proper document. And I believe I labeled it. All right, did that come up?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm doing some rearranging on my screen. If you give me a second. I'm going to go past the preamble and I'd like to acknowledge and thank. Bruce Titler in particular, we have a, um. Very good. Introduction. Um, I, I needed to frame some things so that I understood what was going into there. And as a reminder, there were four representatives from the city. To the. EO two oh three Portland County Collaborative. And I say Portland County, meaning the location, not the government entity. But the village of Homer and city of Cortland were the primary law enforcement. Agencies with support from their political counterparts, i.e. Mr. Titler and myself. And we had numerous community members, in particular, people representing groups that are typically marginalized. And there was a mediator, not so much for the need for a mediator, but somebody independent who could help facilitate. Discussion in a timely manner and a. Manner that would help us progress. And it went very well. Uh, the two other ways that we sought feedback. General community meetings, which we hosted in November and December. There were four different dates, different days, different times. So that we could accommodate the schedules of our constituents regardless of when they may work or be free. And, uh, we were open to receiving public comments via the mail or email. And the third, which we talked about a couple of weeks ago, was the community survey. And I think it's important to mention this one more time because. The community survey was administered by Dr. Mary Canito-Coville. Who is a faculty member in the sociology department at SUNY Portland. Uh, Chief Catalano, Catalano and I met with her virtually. We shared ideas and what was done in two thousand thirteen. I believe the results in two thousand fourteen, the last time. A similar survey had been completed in the police department. Uh, she was able to take that and use that to help draft. And do what is in the, in the world of academia, a. Sampling that would be deemed reliable and valid, that you're getting information on what you hope you're getting information on. And that if you were to do it consistently multiple times. Uh, the results would be consistent, talking about being reliable and valid. Uh. I've had some questions and unfortunately it's social media in terms of some of the questions that are coming forward. And it's difficult to discuss. In. A few characters or less. But suffice to say that when Dr. Canito-Coville presented. Uh, I believe that was at our last meeting, talked about what had to happen. It went through the IRB up at SUNY Portland, which is the institutional review board, which means it's even that third party. Was being held to a high standard. And a third party being held accountable by another third party. Does that make it a ninth party? Because it's squared? Or cubed? Regardless. Uh. In the world of academia, these are the things that need to be done for it to be considered valid. And, um, I have had some concerns from some people in terms of, well, you know, some people didn't get the survey. Well, when you're doing a representative sample, that's what happens. You're trying to get a target audience that is a portion of and representative of. The community. And Dr. Canito-Coville was. Comfortable with the results in terms of who filled out the survey. There was over seven hundred and fifty. I believe it was seven hundred and fifty surveys that were sent out. Uh, we got hundreds back. I want to say it was more than half, which is outstanding. Uh, so if there are questions about the survey. More than happy to talk, or we could bring in. Uh, Mary, if there's questions that she can answer. But we should trust in the process. And my experience is I've looked at other municipalities and asked what others have done. Uh, Cortland has gone above and beyond. And one of the things that I'm very proud of, our chief, our deputy chief. We did not try to frame this before going into the process. So what I mean by that is we went into this and we said, okay. What do people think? So the community meetings were community meetings. Where it was just an explanation of the process and what we were looking to accomplish. Uh, the survey. Basically gave information about why we were doing it. And the collaborative was getting right to it with people about working on this. But we did not try to frame it. What I mean by that. Is that we didn't try to say, okay, well, here's what we're already doing. And here are the great things that our department does. We went in unvarnished. And we wanted to hear what people's opinions are. Before talking about the great things that are done. I think that's important. So in terms of proposed changes, there are several. Categories and items. And this has been shared with council before, but what I did is I tried to flesh it out in a little bit more detail. And the goal is that the casual reader. Somebody who's willing to spend some time to read approximately four pages. If you're not going to read the whole report, if you read these four pages. You know what potential changes you might see in the city of Portland Police Department. And they've broken into categories. First category, police commission. We have three people. The suggestion was to increase the size of the police commission. And to also. Increase some of the responsibilities. And the rationale there is that the police commission. Is an opportunity for people to see and to know. That outside of the command structure, the police, that there is review. And as a reminder. There's a mayor too. So there is outside review. But the idea is to add two members to the police commission, and honestly, this does bring us more consistent with our other boards and commissions in the city. Um, the topic of civilian review of disciplinary matters. You can look throughout the country. Many departments deal with this topic in different ways. And we know that we want to maintain confidence in our officers. And that people know that they are held to a high standard. So if there are issues. Uh, we're going to maintain the command structure. The chief will make a decision. If, uh. Something is warranted in terms of. Uh, consequences for actions and it will be shared with the commission. So there is external review. Hearing concerns regarding performance of our officers. And this is something the chief worked on several years ago by putting a complaint form online, making it more accessible. And open to making it even more accessible. By if we create a. Uh, another email account, maybe it's policecommission@courtland.org. And then people can go right to the police commission if they have concerns regarding an employee's performance. And something for us to, to discuss, if we are increasing the responsibilities. Should there be a stipend for members of the police commission? And that can be up for discussion at a later date. Today, what we're looking to do is to talk about these and see if there are any major issues or concerns. So before I go to Roman numeral two, were there any issues or concerns or anything you would like to discuss regarding the recommendations for the police commission? I can see most people, but I'm going to have to have you speak up counselors if there is something that I'm missing. Community oriented policing. And we've seen this from a number of responses that people appreciate. Knowing who their law enforcement offices are. And being able to interact with them. Uh, something that we need to work on in terms of the language, but the concept is there. The expectation that officers every two hours will do a twenty-minute stroll. And the idea is not just getting out of the car. And walking down a dead end street. But being able to get out of the vehicle. And see other people, say hello, see how things are going. Uh, the idea is giving people the opportunity to interact. In non-stressful situations. Questions came up about the school resource officer. We have an excellent officer who actually trains other SROs. Does a phenomenal job. And the idea of continuing the relationship. And we did have a discussion with the superintendent. But in the interest of. Let's just call it check-ins. Uh, every year a discussion, mayor, police chief and superintendent. What are the goals and what is expected of the SRO? Presence at events, crowd control. Working with community organizers. So if somebody is planning an event. And they are using, for example, courthouse park. Uh, collaborating with them in terms of what they would like to see. Regarding support. Potentially from law enforcement. Which is something that. In a lot of cases is already done. Last one, we talked about de-escalation being the primary goal of conflict situations. This is already enumerated in the. Uh. Orders for the department. But we thought it was important enough that this came forward in discussions that we wanted to reiterate this. Because the goal of law enforcement. Is public safety. And reducing tension. And confrontation is a primary goal. So although this is something we already do, including it. We thought was beneficial. Comments, questions on section two regarding community oriented policing? Moving on, section three, there's five sections, by the way, so we are moving at a steady clip. Review of officer performance. So if there is a, uh, complaint regarding an officer for the citizen review, and this ties back into what we said earlier regarding the police commission. Uh, we are opening. The opportunity for complaints so that people don't think, well, you know, it's just going to go to their boss. Nothing's going to happen. If somebody has a concern. Then they should bring the concern forward. Issue came up or the concern about whistleblower protections. And actually. In the orders, it's pretty clear. That, uh, what the expectations are. So for example. If a officer does something that they are not supposed to, and there's another officer present, that second officer. It's incumbent upon them to report misbehavior. Of the first officer. But this was something, again, that came up in multiple conversations. And to reinforce the importance of accountability, we said that it would be good to include this. Use of force. And I think, well, I know Kat, there was some question about this, so maybe this does a better job of explaining it. There's ten situations where our officers choose not to use force. Do we ever review that? And then do we ever applaud and recognize an officer? For not taking that extra step when maybe they could have. Maybe they would be justified. Use of force is a continuum. Maybe they would be justified in taking the next step. But they did not, and they were successful in diffusing situations. So the intent. And they were successful in diffusing situations. So the intent here is to talk about when we're not. Uh, going to the next step and being successful and appropriately recognizing that. We do have current orders for law enforcement personnel regarding off-duty behavior comportment. How do they carry themselves? Because similar to elected officials, even when you're not on the job. People know who you are and they pay attention. And our chief rec, our chief, our administration recognizes that. Uh, there are orders to this, but we want to make sure that we are. Continuing to stress that, yes, this is important, not just when you are wearing the uniform. But as a hero, as a role model, you are expected to behave in a certain manner, even when you're off duty. And then displays of signs, symbols that are not department approved. Um, there was a number of items that came up in terms of this discussion and I will. Use the example, so SUNY Brockport, their university police department. A couple of months ago made a decision to no longer fly the thin blue line flag. And the reason why they decided to not do that during official events. Was they recognized that there were people in the community. Uh, that did not have as positive a connotation of the flag as others. Because there are some third parties who may have co-opted that flag. So it doesn't relate directly to law enforcement, doesn't relate directly to that department. But they were sensing enough, sensitive enough to say, hey, if there's others that see this as a potential negative. We don't want to be perceived that way. So they got away from carrying that flag during official ceremonies. And we don't know what's officially, well, things change, symbols change. But we need to stay current with the times and we need to make sure that we're all aware that perception sometimes impacts how people view others. So section three, review of officer performance, questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a, I have a comment.
Bruce.
Um, just to let the council know, um, the committee that put forth a lot of these concepts that. Brian organized for us in this fashion, the mayor organized for us this fashion. They, on number five, Mayor, there was a suggestion, there's some wordsmithing still going on. So I guess what I would say to the council is. There's still a, a little bit of wordsmithing going on with some of this document, but it doesn't change any of the concepts. The concepts are all. There's nothing there that adds or takes away from the, wh- what these basic recommendations are. So I'll get the, the, there's like maybe three or four suggestions on changing some language a little bit. I'll get that to the council. Uh, I'll try to send it out to you tomorrow, uh, along with the introduction Brian was talking about. And it'll also have an appendix, the final document will have an appendix. That lists all the people that were on the committee. So the public and everybody will know who was involved. Some people more involved than others, but that'll be the group that came together that first weekend anyhow. So. They're just to let you know, there is still a little bit of language change being discussed, but it's, it doesn't impact the um, overall. Concept of recommendations. Would you agree with that, Mayor, as, as going forward?
Absolutely. And yes, Bruce, thank you for bringing that forward.
Okay, I'll get that out.
Thank you so much for the help on this. Number four, hiring in the promotional process, valuing a diverse workforce. And what we want to do is to help develop potentially an orientation and preparation program to familiarize candidates with the civil service. And hiring process. And this is something that we've seen in law enforcement. Uh, you hear about it from. Different entities. It is not unique to the city of Portland. But for us to be able to recruit and to hire highly skilled and uh, the best of the best in terms of what we want to see. We need to be more proactive in my opinion, and I'm looking forward to potentially partnering and collaborating. With, uh, we've got two fine institutions of higher learning here in the county between SUNY Cortland and Tompkins Cortland Community College. And also engaging the city school districts and talking about what we can do. To more familiarize people with the process to become a police officer. And I think we can do one better and help ourselves and others. By talking more about the civil service process and the other jobs that people can get in government. And in order to continue to hire. High quality people, we need to do more in terms of recruitment. We shouldn't sit on our heels and wait for people to come to us. We should make sure that people are aware of the great job opportunities that do exist. And that's how government will continue to work effectively and efficiently. Second one there, reinforcements of appropriate culture within the department. So there are current guidelines and expectations, as we mentioned earlier, regarding conduct and performance. Chief, we want the chief to continue. That's why it says continue to review and develop peer guidelines that reinforce the qualities that the community expects of officers. And every two years, let's have a discussion. Chief, sit down with the mayor and the council and talk about what are the expectations of the department and of individuals within the department. And tied into that recognition incentives. There was uh, some concern in terms of what types of behavior are we rewarding or recognizing. And we want to have a discussion with support from council and the mayor about what is appropriate. And how do we reinforce what our goals are with any types of recognitions or plottings? Questions about section four. Section five, a little bit longer, but we're almost there, folks. Accuracy of reporting, and this is a reinforcement that we want to make sure that our employees understand the importance. That the information regarding incidents is accurate and thorough. And make sure that witnesses, complainants have the opportunity to review their statements. Closure from incidents, when an investigation is closed, making sure, and this happens quite frequently that. Whoever made the complaint is notified and they may not get all the details. But they will get information about uh, whether or not it's closed. Or what happened? Public feedback. So we did that community survey. Let's do it again. So we say no less than every four years, but it can be done more frequently. And we want to track the efficacy. What are we doing? And are we actually executing what we think we are? Collection and sharing of data from incidents. This was a topic that people were concerned about. How do we know what's happening? Uh, so when we look at the statistics, how many people were pulled over? And are we breaking the numbers down by gender, by race, by ethnicity? How other, what, and what other ways are we analyzing the data? So instead of saying this is what we're going to do, we want to empower the people who are involved. So the police commission, the feedback from the public and also. Review from corporation counsel recommending what data would be available to the general public. And that might mean a change in terms of how some information is accounted for. Video and audio recordings, we're talking about technology and using that as part of law enforcement. So we shall every three years review what technology is employed and make recommendation about future equipment and uses. So we know that we've got cameras and vehicles. We know that we've got cameras down on Main Street. The topic that came up and there was a lot of support for body cams on officers. However, that will be a financial investment and how do we go about that? But my point of view is that if it is a priority, if we value it, we make it a priority and part of that is figuring out. How do we get there from here? So while we may not be able to promise that we would purchase that equipment in twenty twenty-one. We can at least work towards acquiring equipment that the city deems as being important. Training of officers. Talk about the non-mandatory trainings. So there's a number of trainings that are mandatory. So that's why we talk about above and beyond. And we want to have input from the public about opportunities for additional training and in-service. And as part of the annual report, it's a very well-done report. We're going to ask that the training sessions implemented and the number of officers who participated are included. I think that'll be helpful because they, a lot of our employees, many departments have annual trainings. And knowing what they are actually currently going through might help in terms of people understanding that, yes, there are tasks that are accomplished. It's not just getting in the vehicle and driving around. And the last two, the health of officers, and we talked about similar to the potential of physical wellness visits. Encouraging and maybe even making an expectation of having mental health and emotional wellness visits. Uh, this would be private. We're talking about the wellness of our employees and making sure that we're giving them the opportunity. To be evaluated, make sure that they're where they need to be for their personal growth and development. And then evaluation after stressful events, which is something else that we believe is done, but we want to make sure we accentuate the importance of. After traumatic events, and there's some examples there, physical altercation, firing of a weapon, maybe there's something else. Uh, allowing the chief to require a meeting with mental health professionals. Okay, I'm fine. I don't need to, well. Sometimes a third party saying, well, just go and have the conversation is a good step for the individual. And that would be section four. Procedures. Questions? Did I say there were five sections? There's four sections. Always waiting for the fifth section. Hopefully I didn't get your hopes up too much. Counsel, comments, thoughts? Speechless.
Nope, I'd like to thank everybody who worked on that. I very much like the more involvement with the police commission. I, I think it's very good. So again, too, thank you, thank you for everybody that had input to it. Um, thank you, Bruce, for doing what you did with it. Thank you, chief, deputy chief, the mayor. I think it's very, very good. Along with the police commission, I like the idea of officers, road officers being out of the vehicles. Weather permitting. But it looks good to me.
Well, I think it's a lot to process. And I'm looking at the, the faces of my colleagues and I think they're thinking the same thing. So there is a lot to process here. Um, I'll send you some of those suggested uh, language changes as soon as I can, um. Get that all, get that together for you, if not tomorrow, the next day. So then you'll have another week and a half to think about it. And you know, if you like the language changes or don't. Because what we'd like to do, and this gives you folks. Uh, two weeks to, to review all this and process all this and, and bounce it off all the folks. And then we can vote on it the sixteenth. I mean, that's what we, that's unless you want to have a special meeting, the sixteenth is the deadline. And um, this has been a lot of work, but it's been a team effort. There've been a lot of people involved in this. And I have to say, even though she's not here today. Even before the governor issued this order, we were meeting in the back, Katie Silman's backyard, you know, making sure we were all six to eight feet apart and. I know chief was there and this was back in early June, um. Even before the governor issued this order, the, you know, folks here and, and we were already thinking about, okay, what can we do? We make sure that we have the department that. That reflects exactly what the community wants. So. People have been meeting and talking about this for quite a while. It's, 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 it's been a lot of folks involved and um, it's a lot here. And uh, I'll just leave it at that. Hey Mayor, the chief has his hand up. Oh, he's got a lot on.
I just want everybody to know that uh, these are all workable recommendations. Um, and it's uh, good for the police department to have moving forward and you, you're not going to be, we're, we're not creating a, a heavy lift. It's going to be impossible for us to do. Um, they're good ideas, uh, they're good recommendations and um. I know that the department, the police department moving forward will be able to uh, meet every one of them and go beyond in the future.
That's good to hear. And I just want to echo to what others have said that, you know, it's very clear that a lot of work has gone into this process. And I really appreciate the time that, that everyone has spent on it. Um, certainly a number of the recommendations kind of reflect some of the things that I've heard from people in the community about their concerns. So it's great to see that those are, are being heard and incorporated into the plans for moving forward. So, thank you.
Right, so as, uh, as Bruce mentioned, the goal now is to put in front of council. What would be a final product regarding the contents, and we might need to do a little bit more just in terms of the presentation. Uh, but we are going to share with council the pieces and as outlined, there'll be an introduction. This will be the meat of the recommendations. But I plan to also include our methodology in terms of the research because I think that is important. We didn't just pull some things out of the air, sit down for a half hour and say, well, here's what sounds good. There was a lot of listening on the front end and the recommendations coming forward. Uh, I appreciate the chief's comments and. Might be putting some pressure on the next guy, but. Uh, I, I agree that these are. Able to be implemented. And it's interesting because you can go out and you can see plans from many municipalities. Some have been submitted in their final form. Um, there's a lot of press and, you know, and maybe I should be disappointed that I haven't been interviewed by GQ. But this plan is appropriate for Cortland. And some of the other plans, as I read, are probably appropriate for these other agencies and these other municipalities. I don't know, because I'm not working there. I did not put time and effort into another city or another village or another town. But I have nothing but uh, praise for the people who have helped us with this. That includes the three that represented the city, that includes everybody who attended the meetings for the collaborative. And the people who are brave enough and willing to show up for our community meetings. And the people who were willing to take the time to fill out those surveys. You know, if we don't have that kind of community participation and feedback, we, we don't get where we need to be. So the more that we are able to have discussions and the more we're able to kind of look at ourselves. The better we are. And hopefully what comes out of this, the changes are important, but government in general, we need to continue. To build trust and to build confidence at every level in what we do. Um, and I'm very pleased with the process for this. Alright, so if there are any concerns regarding the contents, and yes, we are still doing some wordsmithing. But council, if there are any concerns, please bring them forward and we're looking to finalize this at the next council meeting. Agenda item number sixteen, and this is a discussion item. Couple of years ago, we talked about whether or not there should be two or four-year terms for the mayor and for council. And at the time, we decided to hold off and we saw the village Homer take their councilor mayor from two years to four years. We saw the county legislature go from two-year to four-year terms. Uh, the way the process would work. If this is something that is supported. And Rick will correct me if I misspeak, but the way the process will work will be council passing. A resolution to put this forward to the general public uh, will be voted upon this fall. And it would not take place this fall. It's important to point that out, that the change would start at the next election. So in twenty twenty-three, two years, right? So there's an election for council and the mayor this year, twenty twenty-one. The next election for mayor and council would be twenty twenty-three. If this fall is voted upon to change it to four-year terms, and that would happen in two thousand and twenty-three. And then anybody elected in twenty-three would serve a four-year term. So that's the process. So the first one, we've got them broken into the mayor and then council person. So that's the process. So the first one, we've got them broken into the mayor and then council persons. Discussion regarding the mayor's term should be two years or four years. And what I would do is like to have the discussion today, bring it back on the sixteenth. So if anybody missed this discussion and they read about it, they have the opportunity to come back. Troy, was that a?
Yeah, that was a, that was me, yes.
I saw your hand and then I started talking.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, obviously this will have to be on the ballot, correct?
You've got it.
So personally, I think I'm one of the ones that brought it up a year and a half ago, and I'm all in favor for it, but I guess personally we're only eight of us here. I think if I really like to see what the voters have to say on this matter, so. I personally would like to see it.
You know, these are two agenda items, sixteen and seventeen, but if we bounce back and forth, if we're referring to both of them, that's fine as well.
Um, I think the last time we discussed this, uh, you know, certainly I see both sides to why we would go for a two-year term or a four-year term for either of the two positions that are in question. Um, and I, I think, you know, to Troy's point, letting the public have that opportunity to weigh in and kind of you know, decide by vote is, is an opportunity for that decision. But I, I certainly see you know, the benefits of extending the terms, but I also see the benefits of keeping them shorter. So I, I do see it as an opportunity to get the public's input.
Good. Tom Michaels.
I already started receiving some calls, uh, uh, from some of the constituents. So uh, this should absolutely uh, be a decision made by, made by the public and not the eight of us.
Further discussion. And we can close out sixteen, any discussion of seventeen, which would be council, that was uh, specific just to council. Cat McCarthy.
I just wanted to note that the supporting documentation still refers to council people as older persons. Um, and I just wanted to check that would be updated before this uh, goes through. Is that correct?
This is what I prepared two years ago, of course. Uh, and I just wanted to show it to you again so you could under, you know, you have an idea. But of course I would update it based upon what your conversation was tonight.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you, Cat, for bringing that up.
All right, further discussion? All right, hearing none, then we will bring this back to the table in two weeks on the sixteenth, so we can have further conversation. And potentially a vote. And the vote would be to push it to the November ballot for the general public to be able to weigh in. Mr. Van Donzel.
Do you want this to be a, a public hearing? Cause this is a local law. So you want that on for the sixteenth, or did you want to talk more before you set a date?
I'd like to see it to be on there myself.
Sorry, say again, Troy?
I'd like to see me, see it to be on the agenda for a public hearing.
I would agree. So yes, uh, do we need a motion to make it a public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
A motion to consider public hearing regarding uh, changing the mayor's term to four years and another public hearing changing council members' terms to four years. And the public hearings will be March sixteenth starting at the conclusion of the first public hearing that we talked about earlier, one regarding the CDBG program. So motion to consider. Troy, we have second, Jackie, discussion. All in favor, say aye. All right. Opposed? Okay, for public hearings. And I'd like to ask counsel to adjourn into a, uh, adjourn into executive session. We have discussion regarding a contract negotiation and another discussion regarding a contract with an outside entity to discuss. I am not anticipating action afterwards.
Hey, Mayor, do you want to address item number eighteen or the COVID update?
Nah, I got ahead of myself. Uh, COVID nineteen, I think there were two things that I wanted to emphasize, and I wanted to, first, I'll reiterate what I said at the beginning of the meeting. We've taken violations of the expectations seriously. Unfortunately, there are some people that have to have outside influence to be able to make some of the right decisions. But we are taking it seriously and we are dealing with inappropriate behaviors. And I'm pleased to say that over the last two weekends, it's been more appropriate throughout the setting. Uh, but if there are issues, if there's cause for concern, bring them forward. And the appropriate action would be if you think there's large gathering or other violations, calling the police department. And sometimes people say, well, I'm not sure, should I call nine one one? Well, nine one one is an appropriate avenue for that call. Second thing, today we are seeing that there are a couple of states in the union, in the United States that are starting to really roll back on the protocols and on the precautions. Uh, basically the mask mandate in those states being taken away. And talking about personal responsibility. And saying, well, people will be responsible enough. In New York, until things change, we're not going to change. So here in Portland, until things are changed uh, throughout the state, we are going to continue to treat this as a serious pandemic. People start to say, well, you know what? There's people who have had the vaccination. There's fewer people that are exposed, there's fewer people at risk. That may be true. But we've not crossed the finish line yet. And until we have the health experts giving us more advice and we're getting some more guidance from the state level, I fully intend to keep the city of Portland on the same path to protect our residents.
Oh, hey Mayor, can I add a couple of things that are you done? I don't want to cut you off.
All done. You're up, Bruce.
I just wanted to remind folks St. Patrick's Day is coming up here in a few weeks. And I, I just hope that people will celebrate St. Patrick's Day with the people in their own households and avoid the traditional big parties, much like many people did at Super Bowl time. And I really appreciate that and thankful people did that. The numbers have come back down significantly, but I see today they're back up a little bit from what they were a couple of days ago. But, but we're on the, on the better side of this and we just have to keep on keeping on and, and resist that temptation to, like the mayor said, throw caution to the wind because we're not through it yet, but, but we're headed in the right direction. And I would like to say that I've had conversations with President Bitterbaum and other administrators up at the college and they are take, they have taken very serious action towards some of the irresponsible students of a while ago. And the, and they in no way, shape or form do they condone that behavior. Um, they condemn it as in the strongest terms, and they show that with some of the actions that they've taken, students have been suspended, which is a serious, serious thing. They've done more of that this year than they did in all the other several years put together. So, you know, and I, and I want to also say that the majority of the college students are behaving, and it's those few that just, for whatever reason, just felt the need to do their own thing that, that caused the problems. But the college, the president does not condone that. Um, and I want folks to know that. He, he, he's part of this community. People, I think, forget that. He lives in this community as well. So, you know, he's, his family lives here too. So he is, he is a part of this community, has been for eighteen years, maybe. I don't know. Mayor, you might know more than me, but he's been here for quite a while. And he is, he is part of Portland. So let's keep being safe and let's not party with others outside the household on St. Patrick's Day.
Very good. Very good. Further discussion? Very good. So I'll ask counsel, we have a motion to adjourn into executive session. Troy Beckwith, second, John Bennett. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm opening up the breakout room. I do not anticipate action afterwards, but we'll be back shortly.